Madam, please, I would need time to. Be of day. What my deputy want to add up for me?
Honorable Chair, the specialized expenses comprises a lot of items. We have professional subscription fees, legal expenses, donations. And because of the format of the format we are using, we had some grants from some development partners, KIC, GSDF, Ghana School's Development Fund. We group all of them under that. So the 2 million plus is made up of all these items. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My heart is at ease now because when you said insurance claims for 2.8 million for a university, you wonder what actually, yes. So thank you. You improved upon your current ratio. In 2023, you couldn't fully cover your short-term liabilities. But in 2024, at least you can do it by 2.4 times. And looking at your strength, your location, you can raise more money from your non-revenue, non-tax revenue or your IGF. And so I expect you to be able to raise more revenue. And since you have 100% retention, you raising more revenue does not mean you should increase your administrative expenses. So please take note of that and and work at that. The other one has to do with your indebtedness, the indebtedness of separated staff. I want to find out how you process a staff for payment. How does the university process a staff for payment?
Madam, once again with your leave, I think the Director of Finance will take that.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. We have a payroll unit that at the end of before, by 15th of the month, they would have collated, they have a sheet that it takes to all faculties department to validate the personnel over there. So by the, by 15th, they would have received all. And then the team would use that validation form to actually indicate whether those people are supposed to be paid. We are paid from the Controller and Accountant General. So we, we have validators A1 and ABB. So after the B1 have done their, their certification, before it is electronically forwarded to the A1, which is virtually the Vice Chancellor and, and myself and will certify that.
If one goes through all this process and then someone retires way back in 2019, December 2019, we continue to validate the person and pay from that date to November 2022, more than 24 months, yet you go through all these steps. You go ahead and pay the person book and research allowance, the sponsorship in addition to the salary itself. So one may ask, truly, the steps you just mentioned, did you take that same steps to validate John Kujotiria Hayford? Who was separated from the university from December 2019?
Madam, John Kujotiria left for steady leave in the UK. He didn't retire, he went for steady leave. And normally, once you're on steady leave, you are given an initial three years or four years depending on, I mean, the length of your study. Beyond which, we are given an extension. He's, I mean, once you're on steadily, we are supposed to present progress reports. We noticed after the expiration of the initial four years that he wasn't responsive with our request. And the university took steps then to terminate his appointment. So that is what happened.
So the, his responses, how frequent was it supposed to come to the university? Every month, every quarter, what was?
We normally, I think, every six, every year, it's yearly.
Every year?
Yes. So we take a reports from the, he went for his PhD. We take a report from the student and that of his supervisor.
So every year you are supposed to bring?
Take a progress report.
Bring a progress report, yes. And for four years, we closed our eyes to it. He was, we were paying, when I say we, I mean, the university was paying this person. And after four, it was after four years that you realized that there was no progress report, but yet we were going ahead to pay.
No, initially there was.
So when the auditors came, did you take steps to explain to them that initially there was? If you did, maybe the auditors would have taken that out? Because they are saying that for the four years? Or is it because the person did not return and that is why we are charging everything too?
Exactly.
Okay, so what steps have you taken to?
So we have a five-point action plan to recover funds of this nature. Initially, there is a five-point action plan.
A five?
Point action plan.
Point action plan, okay.
Yes, so initially we've written to all those, I mean, there are six of them as they are listed here. We've written to all these persons with their indebtedness. And then we've also written to Interpol through CID to reach out to these people so that they are flagged at the various entry points of the country. We've also forwarded their names to our solicitors and then they are in the process of being served. We are also going through our documents to find out whether they have any entitlements to the university, which would take out and then pay that into government chest. And then finally, we also looking through our systems and protocols to ensure that any lapses, we close all lapses so that these things don't occur in future.
The amount is 817,609, 19, and 40 pesos. Did they have guarantees on their file?
So it's mixed. So in the case of John Kujotiria, yes, he does have a guarantee.
So what is the essence of a guarantee? When the person you guaranteed for fails to do the needful?
So then we defer to the grantor, so.
So have you done that?
Yes, so we have written to the grantor and then the, and then the beneficiary, that is John Kujotiria, and we've also forwarded their names to our solicitors.
So I'm only asking, in this case, what does the guarantor do? Is the guarantor, aren't you supposed to fall upon the guarantor to pay for this liability?
Yes, so we have done that.
So has the guarantor paid?
No. And that is how come we've written to our solicitors to pursue that legally.
Is the guarantor part of, of the university system?
Yes.
So that if the guarantor is part of the university system and the person he or she guaranteed for failed to come, what do we do? If it's where private company, they would have done the needful. But if governments are buying and you'll be out there, so it is okay. Because once you have identified the guarantor, the other time, one minister came and mentioned that they identified the guarantor and the guarantor had to do the needful. Right here, if you could recall, Ministry of Interior. So respectfully, if you can contact the guarantor to do the needful because once you guarantee for somebody and for one reason or the other, the person is nowhere to be found and the person has defaulted on the terms that was given to, the terms that the person agreed to, we should do the needful. Samuel Sapon Asamoah, can you also give me an update on that? Did you identify the guarantor and is the guarantor part of the university system?
So in the case of Samuel Sapon, his case is different. His appointment was terminated because he failed to sign the bond form and left. So that is how come the university went ahead to terminate his appointment.
Pro VC, you said the person failed to sign before leaving. When you, the university granted the person permission to go and study and yet the person failed to sign?
So what happened was that the applicant was giving all the staff, was giving the permission to go. Normally, when, per the current system we have, we write to the person and in the letter we indicate that the person is supposed to ensure that the bond forms are filled before leaving. He failed to sign. So once it got to our notice, we quickly took steps to terminate. And that is how come I mentioned that we have a five-point action plan we are pursuing. We are reviewing our protocols because these are part of the lapses I've mentioned. What is happening is that rather than, if we go ahead and then give an award letter and in the award letter indicate that the staff should ensure it is signed before he leaves, then that is how come this thing can happen. But if we are, if we make sure that the person signs before the award is given, then this thing wouldn't reoccur. And that is how come in my narration earlier on, I did indicate that, I mean, the protocols would have to be reviewed and we are reviewing that to ensure that it doesn't reoccur.
It took the university eight good months, from January to August, eight good months to realize that the person did not sign the bond form. Or one wouldn't know. It is not something that we should know. So it takes the university eight months to realize that the person did not sign the bond form, but yet has gone ahead and to take advantage of the permission to go and study out and receive salaries at the same time. Let's go to Gladys Essinu Abio.
So Gladys, Gladys took a partial steady leave. By that, what it means is that Gladys was still teaching her studying. Gladys received a partial support from the university to the tune of 16,000 Ghana Cedis and then left. So what it means is that she worked for whatever salary she took. What her indebtedness to the university now is the 16,000 that the university paid.
But the auditors have an amount of 84,252.
No, sorry. So with respect to Gladys, after that, she was supposed to, so she was in the system and then decided to leave after her studies. And by the, what she, she was supposed to give six months notice before. She didn't do that, so she's being charged that amount in lieu of her not giving that notice, yes.
Grace of Parry.
Grace of Parry exceeded her initial maternity leave of one, three months. And then we noticed upon checks that she was not ready to come. So immediately after one month expiration of her, beyond the expiration of her maternity leave, her appointment was also terminated. We've gone ahead to recover part from her entitlements, yes.
And so you are hoping to use other means to defray the rest of the amounts. Benjamin Ganser.
So Benjamin Ganser's case is similar to that of Samuel Sapon.
He also failed to sign the bond.
Yes.
Then it tells us that your internal controls in that area is weak and so you need to improve upon that. And the last person is Ata Yusef.
Similar. So there are three of them with that similar situation.
And so now you are in the helm of affairs. I hope that with the kind of infractions that you have seen, you tighten that area because as a university, you always grant people permission to go and study. The fact that these people have done, committed this infraction, that's not meaning it should prevent other people from enjoying these benefits. But you need to tighten it and make sure that those who have done it pay the price for what they have done. And so we look forward to hearing from you on the guarantor. Because once you guarantee for somebody, that is the unfortunate thing though. But then you should be held responsible for the person's inactions as well. So on this note, out of the 817,619, how much have you been able to collect? And how much can the auditors validate after your confirmation?
I'll, one day, Director of Finance to speak to that.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We, we, we are here to furnish the auditors with the current payment that we have received from internal payment. So we'll seek your permission that we furnish the details with them.
How much have you, how much have you collected from the 817,619 liability?
Okay. For, let me list. Okay. From John Tivia is 7,900. From Samuel Sapon, Samuel Sapon is three, madam, please, I want to be sure as that because I'm on camera.
Go for it, your university, you knew you were coming here. You knew this was one of the infractions that you had been cited for. And you don't come here and say, we should give you time to calculate how much everybody has paid, respectfully.
Madam, please, I have it now. Grace of Parry, 7,991 Ghana Cedis, 80 pesos. John Tivia, 3,995.999. Samuel Sapon, 7,991 Ghana Cedis, 80 pesos. So far.
So John Tivia owe an amount of 486,386 and all you have collected is 3,000 Ghana Cedis?
Yes, Honorable Chair. In fact, all our effort to contact these people have proved future. They are not in the country.
I'm glad that Pro VC mentioned the fact that for John Tivia, the guarantor works with the university. So he liaises with the guarantor to make the necessary payments. Chairman, I would defer the time, the period for the payment to you when I'm, when I'm done with the others. And then for, for Opari, she has paid more than 50% of that. Make sure you collect the rest. So in total, out of the 817, you haven't done more than, is it 25? Seven, three, more than 20,000?
Yeah, just around 20,000.
Yes, just around 20,000 out of 817,619. So the university should take steps to do the needful. Chairman, I want you to give them the period through which they are supposed to clear this infraction.
Pivi, I just want to ask this about John Tivia. It's clear to us that you've been able to receive 3,000 plus as payment. And then from your narration, he's nowhere to be found. So who paid that money? Is it the guarantor or there was a trace that you managed to get him to pay the 3,000? Who paid it?
So all the amounts that were mentioned here are as a result of their entitlements, pending entitlement to the university, which we've gone ahead to use that to defray. So these are not payments directly that, I mean, coming from them, but entitlements, setting with the university now.
Last one, is the entitlement still on hold or it doesn't come again? If it's still on hold and then entitlements are coming, why can't you use it to defray the cost and still 3,000? Has it ceased coming or it continues?
It ceases.
It ceases coming.
Prof, this is government's money. Our money. 817,000 Ghana Cedis on separate staff. How we, you don't have any, you can't contact these people and then you don't have any payment plan. But it looks to me like this was planned chaos. Because these people failed to sign a bond. At least you have three people who failed to do that. It looks like conspiracy to me, sir.
Yeah, on the face of it, yes, but this is what I consider as lapses. Normally, so this, this is what happens. Once a person is granted steady leave, he's written to, just like I did indicate, stating that his application for steady leave has been granted and that he is to go to the HR and then get the bond forms filled before leaving. When this happens, I mean, once the Staff Development Committee meets and grants this, by default, the head of department who normally validates assumes that that has been granted and the person leaves. So these are part of the lapses I'm mentioning.
All right, sir. So we'll make it easier for you. We want you to collect this amount of money in 90 days. However you do it, with all your lapses and everything else, you know we have a guarantees out there. 90 days, we want this amount of money collected. If not, those who validated these people will have to pay personally. Thank you. Now let's move on to your next one. Our auditors, you want to say something?
Honorable Chair, with your leave, would also want to recommend that what they have gotten from the entitlement should be paid into the AG's recoveries account for onward transfer into the consolidated account. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You heard him.
Noted, Honorable Chair.
Now let's go to your next one, delayed projects. And this started from 2019. You started this from 2019 to 2020. You have made a payment of 37,000, 37 million Ghana Cedis. And these have stalled. Why?
Yeah, so these projects currently, in all instances, the contractors now on site working. And we are also happy to inform the committee that two out of these three projects are going to be completed and handed over before the close of the year. That is the Faculty of Engineering block and then the Faculty of Built and Natural Environment. Yeah, that's a five-story, the five-story and four-story block. They are all completed, we have photos to show.
The five-story engineering block is completed.
It's almost about 97% complete. It's been painted and then we are just waiting to, for some cleanup and then handover. So hopefully by the close of the year, we should take delivery of that project.
And then construction of the faculty block?
Same.
Same. And then by the four-story, 27-unit block of flats?
So that, we hoping to get it completed by end of first quarter next year.
Auditors, could you confirm what he's saying, please?
Honorable Chair, we can confirm that the contractors are on site and the projects have reached an advanced stage. Thank you.
You see, you told the auditors the last time they were there that all the contractors are currently on site and work is ongoing.
Yes. So they were on site, yes.
All right. Yes, sir.
Since the contracts started in 2019 and 2020, should you be worried about possible variation?
It is expected, I mean, in a part of the world, I mean, where prices do increase every now and then, yes. So for price fluctuations, they are, they should be expected.
Is it a case that if they've so is it a case that they've come or you are expecting them? I just want to know that what is happening now?
No, so if you take projects that began, I mean, most of these projects, just like you did indicate, started in 2019. And I mean, your bear would mean that were hit with COVID, which slowed the progress of projects generally in the country. So that, together with the fact that, Prof Chair, sorry, Honorable Chair, again, you note also that two of the, two out of three of the projects are, yeah, are IGF and then the other one is GetFund. So for GetFund, I mean, delays in payment also hit us, I mean, so, yeah.
Prof, let me correct something over here. When did COVID come to Ghana?
2019, Honorable.
Twenty what?
19.
It was?
2020.
2020 what?
COVID-19, started 19 and then, I mean, by 2020.
When did they come to Ghana?
2020, we were on lockdown, first quarter 2020, we were on lockdown.
But you started all these projects in 2019, 2019, 2020. COVID wasn't here.
COVID was here in 2020, Honorable Chair.
But not in 2019. How did that affect the project? How did that affect the project anyway?
No. What I'm trying to say is that, so there are, I mean, several factors. I only mentioned Covid as one of the factors. Certainly, with the lockdown, I mean, we're not working. So that was.
Kofrodia, but was there a lockdown in Kofrodia? And for and for how many weeks? I'm sorry? And for how many weeks was there a lockdown in Kofrodia? Or how many months?
Yeah, I didn't answer that. Uh uh Prof. I'm just asking you these questions because um I know that when projects delay, there'll be positive variations and the rest of it. That is why you said the contractors are on site now. So I just want to know if you've hit by or they've come to you uh with a request in respect of variation. So that will take you from there. If if they haven't come with variation request, then that's fine.
So price fluctuations, I said yes. Price fluctuations. Yes, so variations, when we talk of variations, it could either be additional with changing scope. Yes, so price fluctuations, yes.
So was it part of the contract or?
Pardon?
Do you have it in the contract? Is there, was there a clause?
Yeah, there is a fluctuation clause in the contract. Yeah.
Did I hear you say that in our part of, in this part of the world, there will be uh variations?
Price fluctuations, price fluctuations.
Price fa- fluctuations?
Fluctuations, changes in price of materials.
You see, what it says, what this one tells me is there wasn't proper planning when you started this. And then you delayed it and delayed it. Anyway, that's Kofrodia, right? Kofrodia Technical University, right?
Yes.
You are discharged.
Thank you very much.
Is is Gimpa around? Can we call Bogata Technical uh University, please? Bogata Technical University, are you here? Oh, please come and sit down. Could you please introduce yourself to the committee? Hey, have you, did you take the oath?
Yes, we did.
All right, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Samuel Erasmus Alna, the Vice Chancellor.
Sir Chairman, my name is Richard Attia, Acting Registrar.
Chairman, my name is Solomon Awaria, Acting Director of Finances.
Vice Chancellor, you are welcome.
Thank you, sir.
We've met several years, right? In Tamale?
Yes, yes, sir. We've met several years, in Tamale.
Um I'm looking at your financial performance and um I see, I've seen that uh you, the year and the review, you ended with a surplus of uh thirty five million and eighty seven, thirty five million as compared to one point five million recorded in twenty twenty three, representing an improvement of uh two thousand three hundred and twenty one point two percent. So what accounted for this uh story?
Thank you, Chair. So under the year and the review, the university was fortunate to have gotten some grants in kind and some funding from our partner partners to implement some projects. And also uh there was an uh marginal increase in enrollment. So in terms of school fees, we're also making some revenue from that. Maybe the Director of Finance will provide further explanation.
Thank you, Chairman. I think those are the high issues that accounted for the increase in uh our profit surplus for the period.
So that accounted for the major surplus that we saw.
Yes, please.
And then um your I G F, I saw that it also increased substantially. So what are the components of your I G F? Can you tell us?
Components of the I G F, school fees, uh donor funding, uh attestation transcript, congregation fees. But substantially among them was the school fees and the donor funding that were the huge amounts we got in that particular period. Thank you.
Got your expenditure, so I saw that uh your consumption of fixed assets also increased. And that increased about seventy nine percentage points, which is a a huge increase from nine hundred and four to thousand to seven point three million. So can you walk us through this, why this huge jump?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh as a result of uh adopting government policy on the fixed assets, there was a need to, for us to revalue the fixed assets of the university. And that brought about increase in the fixed assets of the university and subsequently led to the increase in the consumption of fixed or depreciation of fixed assets for the period. Thank you.
Sir Chairman, looking at your financial position, um it looks good. So all all what I can say is that um they should increase, they should keep up uh the whatever they are doing that has reflected in the very, this very nice financial uh position that we are seeing. But the current ratio improved to thirteen point uh point zero point one in twenty twenty four, indicated that the uh the university were able to meet short term financial obligations when they fold you. So you've done well and uh I I know the V C since it was a polytechnic, he has been there till now. He he's done a very good job. Prof, thank you.
Thank you, sir. With your kind guidance, I've been able to uh to rake in a lot of revenue. So we hope that uh going forward, we'll continue to get the support to be able to do better.
If you, if you do good, when you come here, we'll see it. Uh if if you fall to where you come, we see it. You've done well.
All right, you are discharged. Now let's call Tamale Technical University. Wow. Please introduce yourself to the committee.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair. I'm Bashir Uymur Ibn Said, the Vice Chancellor for Tamale Technical University.
My name is Al Hassan Abdurazat, Director of Finance, Tamale Technical University.
Honorable Chair, my name is Yakui Drisu, Registrar, Tamale Technical University.
Honorable Chair, my name is Mohammed Kamal Dina Alasa, Director of Internal Audit, Tamale Technical University.
Okay, Honorable Abana Oseasa, I will go through the financials with you.
You're welcome, um T T U.
Tatu, thank you.
Yes. Prof, how how long have you been there?
One, one year, four months.
One year, four months.
Honorable Chair, yes.
Okay. You and your team.
As the Vice Chancellor.
As a Vice Chancellor, one year, four months. I think you've done a good job. That's why I asked. Yes.
Thank you.
You've done a good job. Just like my colleague said, when you come here and you have done something that is commendable, we will let you know and we'll let the whole world also know. And in that same way, when you come, you haven't done something that is uh you've done something that is not commendable, we'll let the whole world know. And you moved um from a surplus of one point seven million to a surplus of thirteen million. And you improved so much on your uh current ratio, where you could cover your short term liabilities by two point six times to seven point six times. It means you are doing something right and we ought to support you to, for you to build on whatever you are doing and for other investors to also come and study from what you are doing. So I'm impressed with what I have seen. It is true that I'm I'm sure you are in the same category where you would have uh to go ahead and get extra staff to support um the staff that is currently on government payroll. But you did not allow that to go over and above the revenues that you raised. And that is commendable. And I have also seen that you are able to raise close to one third of what government gives you as I G F. And that is commendable. Government gives you a hundred million and then you raised almost thirty million from uh your own intelligent rated funds. And that is commendable. Even your project income, the project income that you received and your project expenses, you make sure you did not spend more than what you received. And that is prudence. So um I don't think I have much to say. But to help, to encourage you. You're welcome. And to let you know that you have an ally in us. We want you to open up the place. And if we want to open up Tamale for business, a lot will depend on what you are doing. And so keep it up. Whatever it says that you have to do to to make sure you maintain and improve upon what this results that you have shown to us from the auditors, uh you have to do it and do it well. So I'm for Tamale. It's not just me, but your figures are speaking to what I'm saying. And so um, well done.
Thank you very much, madam.
Prof, thank you. You've done very well, just as my chair commanded you. But when I look at your donations, twenty twenty three, you had sixty eight thousand and twenty twenty four, you had twenty one thousand. What is the disparity? Can you share with us what I counted that?
Honorable Chair, with your permission, I would defer to the Director of Finance to respond to that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It is something that we actually do not have control over. Uh donations usually come from external parties who, for one or two reason, decide to extend gratitude to us. So that aspect of inflow, we actually do not have control over it.
All right, um the next uh, the infraction is on paragraph four, four zero nine. And Honorable Nasser will take care of that one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. V C. Congratulations, Asma. As the chairman said, you are doing well.
Thank you very much.
But when it comes to your donations, I think you have to you have to officially ask the my colleague, the honorable member, to support you as well. So that next year, the donations will come up.
Honorable Chair, well noted.
Thank you very much. V C, you are doing very well, but your lands have been encroached. You are doing very well, but the lands have been encroached. The Dimali, the land situated at Dimali uh has been encroached. And we have other ones here. But for the sake of land gas, I don't want to mention the names. But I think you have the, you have a copy. So you can speak to it for us to know how far you've gone with that. For the um title this to these lands. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. Um the university asset register has been duly updated. I would defer to Director of Finance to provide the details.
Thank you, Chair. Let me indicate that the title this have actually been, the university have taken the necessary step to get those particular properties registered at Land Commission. And we have provided the auditor general with the registration fee and other relevant documentations that we obtained from the Land Commission. Regarding the asset register, like the Vice Chancellor indicated, the asset register have been duly updated and we have finished the auditor general with a comprehensive, what is it, record of our asset register that confirms that these particular properties have been incorporated into our asset register. Thank you.
Auditors, please can you confirm?
Honorable Chair, yes, indeed, the asset register has been uh duly updated. I think the main issue was for them to secure the land, which they have started something with the Land Commission. So we hope that they can complete that for the land to be fully secured. Thank you.
Chairman, I think the management of this university have been very prudent. And I have no other further question. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh the next infraction is on paragraph four one nine and uh Honorable Shalit Chair will take care of that.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Um Tamale Technical University, um we realize that um you are not registered with the Data Protection Commission. Um yet you are collecting data of students and uh other stakeholders. In your management response, you said you would take steps and comply. Can you please update the committee if you've complied with this?
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. We've fully complied with that. I would defer to the Director of Finance to provide the details.
So uh, Sir Chair, like the Vice Chancellor indicated, following this particular observation that came out in the Auditor General's report, on June twenty third, twenty twenty five, the university management took the necessary steps to pay for the registration uh certificate at the Data Protection Agency. And the receipt had been provided to the auditor general. Except that after the payment, whilst we are expecting this particular certificate to be issued to us, we got another letter from the authority indicating that because of the default, we were supposed to pay a penalty for a period that the university had defaulted. That particular one too has since been paid. And we've been told that there are guidelines, it has to take a number of days before the certificate is issued. So we have finished the auditor general with all the relevant documents, including the payment that we have made and the correspondence that we have with the Data Protection Agency. Thank you very much.
Auditors, can you please confirm this?
Honorable Chair, yes, we can confirm the assertion that he made. Thank you.
Tamale.
Tamale.
Commendation, well done.
Thank you.
Tamale Technical University, you've done very well. Thank you. You are discharged.
Thank you very much.
All right. Let's call Doctor. All right. Let's call Dr. Hila Lehman, Technical University. Please introduce yourself to the committee.
Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair, I'm Engineer Professor Hamida Tadarimani, the Vice Chancellor.
I'm Musa Basig Diabo, Director of Finance.
I'm Joseph Bender, Acting Strategic Director.
Honorable Chair, my name is Abdurazak Abdalai, Acting Director of Internal Audit. Thank you.
All right, Honorable Abner Oseasari will handle your financials.
Dr. Hila Lehman, Technical University. Yeah, I also see some positives at your end. I noticed that in 2024, you turned a deficit situation in 2023 to a positive. You had a deficit of 1.2 million Ghana cedis in 2023 and a surplus of 1.4 million Ghana cedis in 2024. And I also see your employees' compensation. Let me admit that this is the first time I'm seeing a compensation fit within a government's intervention. All the others that have appeared before us, their compensation is always over and above government's intervention. But this one sits within. Madam, are you the one, Professor, you mentioned your name, Professor?
Hamida Tadarimani.
Okay. Professor, I believe it's because of the prudent way in which you are managing the place. But I'm happy that this time we found a university that is living within their located government's intervention.
Thank you, Prof.
And clearly, your current ratio also tells us that there's been an improvement. In 2023, you couldn't, or you could cover your short-term liabilities by just 50%. But then in 2024, you can cover it about 1.2 times. I believe you can do more, because you have what it takes to do more. What I would encourage you to do is to work on your IGF. Your IGF is very, very low. Last, in 2023, you did 4.6, and then in 2024, 4.5. So it came down by close to 100, a little over 100,000. But IGF is something you can concentrate on to raise a lot of revenue, to help you build the infrastructure that you need, support government build the infrastructure that you need, so that you can also expand. So it is something I would want you to look at. And also the grants and donations. I realized that in 2023, there was none, but in 2024, you had close to almost 700,000 Ghana cedis. I want you to maintain that and do everything possible to always getting some grants to augment what government and your IGF is also giving you. And please be checking your consumption of goods and services and to make sure that you live within and maintain the profits, the profits that you've had in 2024 and replicate it in the years, the other years that you have before you. I am okay with Dr. Hila Lehman, and well done.
Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Now, let's go to the management issues. And Honorable Frank Yebua will take, I'm sorry, oh, Honorable Kenny will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Hila Lehman, we are welcome once again. Six officers of yours were wrongfully paid office holding allowances amounting to 196,393.15 Ghana cedis. The Auditor General recommended to management to recover the said amount and same paid into their recovery account, which you confirm you did through Controller and Accountant General System. Therefore, Sebastian Dagua. He was underpaid Entertainment and Responsibility allowances and was overpaid fuel allowances as well. GTEC therefore asks for correction and not refund. But the Auditor General did not get the relevant documents for confirmation. How far have you gone about that?
The Finance Director would then take that. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. When the request was made, we completed the necessary input forms and submitted to GTEC for the correction, which was done. Unfortunately, we did not pick his pay slip to confirm, to submit as confirmation, but he is now on his rightful allowances. Thank you.
What accounted for the delay in providing the necessary documents to the Auditor General?
Honorable Chair, I'll just say this one is a fault on our side. Actually, I did not know we're supposed to send that as an evidence to them. Pardon me for that.
Thank you, Chair.
They cited you. You mean Auditor cited you, right?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. All right, let's go to the next paragraph, 443, by Honorable Frank Yebua.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It relates to an earned allowance of 34,971. And it's reported that one, Mr. Archery Solomon, was given an appointment for a year. And after the tenure, you continued to pay him to the tune of 10,986. There's another person here, the registrar of the university, Mr. Songutwa Vitos, who occupied a fully furnished accommodation, was wrongly paid housing utility and domestic servant allowances totaling 23,984. So in total, 34,971 cedis was paid to these employees who are no longer with you. So the Auditor should recommend that you should take steps to recover the 34,000 from these two staff, staff members. What is your current status? Thank you.
Yeah, Honorable Chair, I think that is right. And so we have actually communicated to the affected staff and they are committed to paying by installment. So we have already recovered some amount of money. I think the Director of Finance can give us the details.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. On the part of Mr. Solomon Archery, so far, 6,000 was paid, that's two installments. The registrar also paid 10,000 and still have an outstanding of 13,000 to pay, but he is committed to paying them.
Do you have a structured payment plan or do you just pay what you want to pay?
Yeah, it's monthly, sir. Yes, sir.
So it's monthly repayment? Okay, so auditors, can you confirm 6,000 from Mr. Archery and 10,000 from Vitos? Thank you.
Yes, Honorable Chair, so you know 16,000 has been recovered.
Finance, from the payment plan, when are you supposed to recover all of them, the total amount?
We hope to get these ones done at least before the next audit, sir. That is probably by February next year, we should get these things completed.
You indicated to the committee that you have a structured payment plan. So I'm assuming that you know how much you collect every month and know the total amount left. So you shouldn't be guessing. You should be able to tell us when the final payment will be made. Thank you.
All right, the next infraction is on paragraph 457. And Honorable, we'll handle that.
Thank you, Chair. So this infraction has to do with wrongful payment of allowances to staff on steady leave to the tune of 42,926. So the auditors noted that three officers of the university were granted steady leave with pay, who were granted steady leave with pay, where pay salary related allowances amounting to 42,926 Ghana cedis, which they were not entitled to. The auditors recommended the recovery of this amount from the officers and paid them into the Auditor General's recovery's accounts. What has been done about this?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The information was communicated to the affected staff, but the union came up with a document that was approved by government. That staff on approved steady leave with pay were entitled to allowances, just like their colleagues who were at post. We're giving the document that was signed by the union leaders and Fair Wages. A copy was given to us before we came here.
Prof, were these documents presented to the auditors when they came on site?
As of the time they came, the document was not ready. They told us they were communicating to their national executive to finish them with that document. And when it was brought, they gave us a copy.
So has it been presented to them prior to your coming here today?
No, please, sir.
Why? Because you knew you had been cited for this. You had been presented with documentation on this. And you keep these documents until you appear here?
Sorry, sir. It was presented, sir. It was presented.
Auditors, can you confirm if you have cited these documents?
We refer to it as.
Yes, Honorable Chair, we've gotten the document.
And auditors, can you confirm that your documents that were cited warrants that these allowances be paid as part of their steady leave?
Yes, Honorable Chair, impaired agreement they have from Fair Wages and the Union, that is what it says. But we want to interrogate it further and be able to conclude on this particular matter.
So do I take it that this infraction still stands?
Yes, as far as we are concerned.
Okay, Chair, so.
So infraction still stands?
Honored Chair.
And when are we going to get this resolved?
We'll liaise with the auditors and make sure we clarify it. And if they have to still pay, then we'll find a way out. But that's the stance now. They have a written agreement, you know, agreed by Fair Wages. So just follow that up too. So we'll liaise with the auditors. Thank you.
Auditors, can you provide a timeline for which you will be able to resolve this issue with the university?
Honorable Chair, we may ask for two weeks to do this.
Thank you.
Two weeks granted. The next infraction is on paragraph 464, and Honorable Nasir will take care of that one.
Thank you very much, Chairman. VC, this.
Honorable Chair, yeah.
This is about staff who receive some benefits which they were not entitled to because of the grades they were on.
Sure.
So the state lost over 100,000 Ghana cedis. Because I would like to find out, have you been able to recover these amounts from these individuals? Thank you.
The Director of Finance will take this.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The amount involved was actually detected when I assumed office or I took over fully in January. So before the auditors came for the 2024 audit, we had already written to GTEC for a stoppage and the necessary action. So in February, a letter went to GTEC. In March, GTEC also wrote to Controller. And Controller affected the stoppage and per what Controller communicated to us was the issue started from 2021. So they did a retro net dating back to 2021. And that is the stage of action that was taken so far.
Vice Chancellor, so what are the steps you are taking now to recover it?
So like you said, it has been set, the retro net to recover all the, most everything. So with time, it's assumed they'll pay off everything through the payroll.
Auditors, please can you give us some confirmation on this after the retro net?
Yes, Honorable Chair, so that has been the arrangement for the amount to be deducted from the salary at source. And so far, from the evidence provided, 18,094 has been recovered out of the 196,393.
Dr. Hila Lehman, the next infraction is a paragraph 470, failure to recover judgment debt. Someone sued you, investee, you won an appeal, and you were supposed to collect 55,000 judgment debt award, but you haven't collected it yet. What has happened to it?
So the Director will take it. We've taken some steps to recover that.
He's what?
We've taken some steps to recover it from him. So the Director of Finance would explain.
Director of Finance?
The school solicitor wrote to, or the university through the solicitor filed a case at the war court for the recovery process to take place. And the gentleman was duly served with the notice of recovery.
You were given a judgment debt. What has happened to the money?
We are yet to, okay.
So the court collected for us, so we filed. So the court collected for us, so we filed. So we, we have actually gone back because the guy, he's not with us, he's now with a different university. And so we really want to pass through the court to collect it for us.
And how long has that taken you?
So give us just three more months, we will follow him because the guy in question has taken us back to court, so it's a very dicey thing, but we will, we will follow up. This year. Twenty twenty-four, this year twenty twenty-four, last year twenty twenty-four, sorry.
Twenty twenty-four, what month?
May, seventh May, twenty twenty-four.
So May twenty twenty-four, and you haven't made any effort to go and collect this amount?
We have.
What evidence do you have that you made the effort to collect the money?
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have the letter here, but we really have made some efforts. Maybe we plead that if you give us some three more months, we would follow up and make sure we collect the money.
Madame, May of twenty twenty-four. Now we are in November of twenty twenty-five. If those, all those months, you couldn't collect it, you mean to tell this committee that three months, you'll be able to collect this amount?
We intensify our efforts.
No, 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 it's not about intensifying your efforts. You had about eighteen months, you couldn't collect it. Because from your answer, I will make a ruling.
Okay.
And you'll be stuck with it. So you say you wrote a letter?
Yes, it's been written.
You wrote a letter when?
The registrar is supposed to really. That was last month, last month. It, I don't really remember, but we wrote it last month.
So after the ruling, you waited till last month before you wrote a letter?
Actually, I am sitting in as a Vice Chancellor, I wasn't in then. So I am answering, I was just in office five months ago. And these issues were brought to my attention just when I started. So some of these issues are quite new. But I promise that if I'm given some time, I recover this money, thank you.
What about your financial officer over there? When to around?
The same, I also started effectively this year.
So everybody started this year? Wow. What about the other two gentlemen? Yes.
Honorable Chair, we were around.
I'm sorry?
We've been around since the issue started.
You've been around? Your position again?
Acting Director of Internal Audit.
Acting Director of Internal Audit?
Yes, please.
And you didn't make sure that this thing was collected? Fifty-five thousand Ghana cedis?
Honorable Chair, I think it's even part of our prompt that probably has brought the issue back to form. Because I have made a follow-up.
You've made the follow-up?
Yes, please.
To?
To management, to.
To management?
To recover the amount.
And management didn't listen to you?
I think initially, the explanation was that we needed to go back to the court to enforce that.
And why didn't you go back?
I think we have, through the solicitor, we are now in court to.
Oh, that was last month?
Yes.
Okay, this is what we'll do. I will give you thirty days for you to come up with evidence that you've tried to get it from the bank, from the court. If not, those people who are responsible to collect this will pay the fifty-five thousand. I think that will teach you a lesson. So thirty days. And the evidence should be given to the auditors. Otherwise, those of you who are responsible to do that, I'm saying again, you pay the fifty-five thousand.
Well noted, Honorable Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Hila Lehman, Technical University, you are discharged.
Thank you.
Now let's call Tech Credit Technical University. Please, did you guys take the oath? You did? All right, please have a seat and introduce yourself to the committee. Sir, please use a microphone, so that the whole country will recognize your voice.
Reverend Professor John Frank Kishan, the Vice Chancellor of Tech Credit Technical University.
Mrs. McLean, abnormality registrar.
Elizabeth Robin, the Director of Internal Audit.
Emmanuel Wadi, Deputy Director of Finance.
Engineer Philip Cow, Director of Works and Fiscal Development.
All right. Honorable Kisekunedu will handle the financials with you.
Chairman, thank you very much, Reverend, welcome. Reverend, let me start with this one, what are social benefits? And you have six hundred and sixty-five thousand for this year, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I will let the Deputy Finance Officer.
Social benefits are scholarship that we pay to, we pay on behalf of our students. We give students scholarship. And from the IFSA's structure that came, you are supposed to report it under that. So the money that was used to support student by world scholarship is what is referred to as social benefit.
Okay. And in your account, you realized foreign exchange gains.
Yeah.
What foreign exchange transactions are you involved in? That there was that expectation for you to realize gains on them?
We have a foreign account for our foreign student. We have foreign student that we admit, and they pay the fees in dollars. So at the end of the year, when you have been our account, you have to convert it to Ghana C D. So at the time you converted, there was a gain.
So you had an expectation of how much you were going to earn in C D. So you realized that as a gain? If it's a foreign exchange account?
We receive it as, at a particular rate. And when the rate went up, there was, when you converted, we had more compared to when we received the money.
And you realized that as gains?
Yes, it's a gain, that's how you treat it in accounts.
Because if it's a dollar account, it remains in the dollar. When you realize it and you would want to convert into C D, the amount of money that you realize then becomes a total revenue into whatever you'd want to transact with.
Yes, it is in the dollar form, but once you are preparing account, you have to prepare it in C Ds. So you convert it from dollar to C Ds, so that you get the actual C D equivalent.
So why do you get a gain and why do you get a loss with that? Because it's a dollar account you receive. If you don't want to convert, you convert at the exact amount. If you tell me because in your expectation, beginning of the year, the rate was ten, and at the end of the year, the rate is twelve, so you recognize the difference as a gain?
Yes, yes.
That this expectation is somehow.
That's how it's done.
Let's take it that.
That's how it's done.
Confirmed, you want to come in on that? Okay, Mr. Ado.
Yes, Honorable Chair, the reporting currency is in C Ds. And so even if you have money in any foreign currency, you have to, at the end of the year, when you are preparing the account, convert it into the C D. And so in this case, at the time they did a conversion, the dollar has strengthened against the C D, so they will have more C D if they are converting. They will have more C D. And so because of that, it is a gain to them. It is more or less like they are getting more in terms of C D if they were to change their money into C D. And so that is, in itself is a gain, though you may not see any kind of cash coming to them, but assuming they are converting it into the C D, they are going to get more. So it's a gain to them. And they would have to report it as such in their accounts.
Mr. Ado, thank you, but however, you see, my challenge was, with what benchmark are you trying to do that? And that is the only, it's just a total revenue, that ought to have been included either in their academic fees or what. But however, we take it like that, because you don't know where you are benchmarking from, so let's keep it that way. Your consumption of P P is, that is your depreciation and amortization reduced drastically from five million to eight hundred and seven thousand. Is it that you've disposed of so many that there were no depreciation attached to those ones? Or what accounted for that? Because this is a huge reduction in terms of your amortization and depreciation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Prior to twenty twenty-three, you were prepared account based on cash basis. Now, when twenty twenty-three were asked to convert to IFSA's, you have to revalue all the asset. And when they revalued, the figure became huge. So when we applied the depreciation rate, it gave us a five million. In twenty twenty-four, we didn't acquire much asset, that's why the value came down.
Oh, okay. And probably my last one would be on your compensation of employees. You increased about twenty-five percent, and that is on the expenditure side. However, at the same time, your government's interventions and grants, that would compensate for employees also increased. Why the disparity? Is it that the first one, in terms of the expenditure line item, whether you are taking on more casual workers? And there's the first, the second one, in terms of government intervention, were in terms of promotions and maybe upscale of staffs that you already had?
The, thank you, Chairman. The compensation you have here, you have two types. That one from the government, which is made up of the salaries that is paid to us and the book and research allowance, that make up the compensation. Now internally, we also have certain allowances that is due staff as a result of their condition of service. We also have recruited the casual workers to help us and part-time workers as well. And last year too, we were giving some financial grant to make recruitment, that's account for the difference.
Your current assets are increasing. That is your hold on cash and cash equivalents, probably may include your short-term investment and the rest, is increasing. But when you look at your investment income, it halved. What is accounting for that? Four million, you ended up at two point eight.
Yes. If you look at the location of our institution and the type of student that we get, they hardly pay their fees in full. And we realized that it was becoming very difficult for them. So management decided to allow them to pay the fees in installment. And as when the money comes, you make investment. And the fees that we get is usually made up of two, first semester and second semester. So the second semester that we receive, that we don't use immediately, they are usually invested. So in this year, in the year twenty twenty-four, the student were not paying fees, that's why we couldn't get much for the needed investment.
You said they were not paying fees?
Yes, because of the nature of the student we get, they don't pay school fees in full. So we give them permission to pay it in installment. And it is when the school fees come in abundance that we have the surplus to invest for second semester. But once the money, they were not paying the fees, we couldn't get enough to invest, hence the reduction in the investment income.
Right. Have you looked at your academic fees and other charges? That increased. Your cash and cash equivalents, your current asset also increased.
Yes.
Are you telling me they all came at the latter part of the year, said that the investment income for that specific year would have been lower? Or is it that they were not paying? It is possible it came at the end of the year, so investing them will not yield enough returns. But if you give the explanation you are giving, and if you look at these two line items, for me, it will not answer it financially. Because your fees has increased per the statement, forty-two to forty-seven. Your cash and cash equivalent, twenty-two to twenty-seven, all of these are increments. So in any way, wherever you put them, yes, and your liabilities are also increasing, it means you are not paying them. So it means you are having more cash, and your investment incomes are also reducing. So if you put all of these things together, the answer that you give me would be a bit short of it.
I'm telling you nothing but the truth.
The infractions will start at paragraph five one nine. And Honorable Bauer will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chairman, and the infraction relates to unsecured bond. If I may ask, where is Mr. Bright O'Drill?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bright O'Drill is in Canada now.
So he takes our money, goes to study, and he remains in Canada?
Yes, sir.
What steps are you taking to recover the money?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we did is that we have the bond form, which is filled by the staff and the guarantors. In fact, when he refused to come, we contacted the guarantors to retrieve the money. And the guarantors also informed him and asked when is the, he had paid six thousand out of it, and that he has decided that he will pay five thousand every two weeks.
Out of eighty-two thousand?
Yes, please.
He has paid how much?
Six thousand.
Six thousand?
Yes, please.
The recommendation of the auditors was that you should take steps, including legal action. This money, if you are taking it from somebody, will he, you'll be paying it with interest. Now, what he's doing is trying to at least prevent other lecturers and also other staff of the university from accessing this facility. Am I right? So the, 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 you should have, I mean, if you have, you have not abided by the recommendations of the auditors. What if you should take legal action? Have you, have you done that?
There's good lawyers in the process of writing them, but we have already.
So you should take, if you should, coming here, if you had a written hand that you've sued the guarantors and that you are taking back government's money with interest, because you can't take our money, go and study, and then you say you refuse to come, I mean, impart knowledge to our people. And then you stay with it there, if you want to stay there, take, find your own money and go. But you can't take government money, go and pay the agreement, you have to come back and come and teach, then you go back and then you say you are not coming back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have two guarantors that you have written to. And we have written to them that we are going to put them back on their salary so that you can retrieve the money. And that's, it is through the process that you got the six thousand.
Six thousand is roughly now you get out of eighty-two thousand. And now he wants to pay the money, ask how he, he, he wants to pay it. I mean, it's, it's, it's not right, it's not right. If he pays his, how, when will he finish paying this money? So that at least others two can also benefit from the facility. So you have to take legal action as recommended by the auditors. If you had done that, then we know that we have taken a step to retrieve the money.
Yeah, noted, you do that, you do that.
So, Chairman, we are in your hands.
But it's interesting, you come and sit here, and you tell us that noted, you take legal action. Auditors told you that long time ago. Why didn't you take legal action at that time?
We were consulting, no, we wrote to him for him to respond. And then, you know, he was given one year, and then he asked for an extension. So after the extension, then we realized that he was not coming back. So you wrote letters and then trying to retrieve the money's from.
So how would you feel if those of you responsible are made to pay this amount of money? Instead of going after him, because to me, you've allowed him just to stay out there and not pay this amount of money. You advised about a legal action, and you haven't done it.
No, please. No, um, please, um, we gave him one year and then you he requested for an extension. So it was after the extension that we realized he's not coming back and we started taking the action. And the auditors came and then said we should um take legal action against him. So since he has responded that he's going to now pay, I think there's no need for us to do that. So.
If he's going to pay?
Yeah, yeah, we have to give him payment plan for him to um pay accordingly.
Does he have a payment plan?
Yes. He said, that's why he said every two weeks he's going to. He said every two years he's going to pay five thousand. And the first one is came on Wednesday.
I'm sorry. You said, he said every two weeks?
Every two, he will pay five thousand. And the first five thousand came on Wednesday.
But he signed the bond that he will come back.
Yes.
And he didn't come back.
Yes.
And you still trust his word of mouth that he was going to pay five thousand every two weeks?
So we decided that since you have two guarantees, who guarantee for him? We are going to hold the guarantees who are still working with us. And that's all you have done.
Sir, go after the guarantees.
Thank you, sir.
Go after the guarantees. However, they will squeeze the money out of him. That's none of our problem. But we'll give you ninety days to collect this amount. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Ah, the next infractions on paragraph five-two-four. And Honorable Duke Oforiata Amo- Amoakwata will take care of it.
Thank you, Chair. Management, you have a colleague, Edmund Boedy, who has an infraction. He vacated post and he received an earned salary to the tune of nine thousand two hundred and twenty-two. Management, the auditors recommended that you collect the monies. And I'm happy to note that you responded. The university will use its tier-three to pay the unearned salaries. Can you tell the committee if you have affected this? If the monies have been collected and you have made same notice to the auditors, please?
Thank you, sir. Yes, we have a tier-three for all staff. So we, at the time of audit, we responded I went to use the tier-three. So when we contacted the company, they said unless the Edmund Boedy gives his consent, they can't pay the money to us. Fortunately, we have, we are now in contact with Edmund Boedy. And he's saying that he's ready to pay and that we should give him the bank details for him to start the payment. But after the tier-three that we wanted to use, the company is saying that unless he gives his consent, they will not give the money to us.
Can you tell us how long ago you got into this arrangement or agreement?
On Monday, I contacted the validate, the officer who signed for him to be validated. And through that, he contacted him U S and we were able to get this fair arrangement.
Mr. Chair, they seem to have an arrangement. I leave it in your hands because they are going to wait on the gentleman to give off a sign-off. We want to know when they will actually effect payments.
Yes, sir. Did the auditors know about your arrangement?
No, please.
Master, you guys don't look good. You were here when we complimented another school. But this one looks like there's no sense of urgency. When are you going to get this one done?
Mr. Chairman, we will contact him as soon as we leave here to get the payment plan so that we can finish the auditors.
Didn't you guys know they had to contact this person before coming here?
We were not getting him, you know, because he's outside, all his numbers were not going through. Fortunately, through somebody else, we were able to get his number.
Sir, you'd be surprised. The whole country is watching you. The whole country is watching you and listening to your answers. When you get back home, get a copy and read and see if if you look good on that one. Now, then, your response was the university will use his tier-three to pay the unearned salary. Have you done that?
That's what we wanted to use. We contacted our.
No, but that's what you told the auditors. The auditors came there, they asked you about it, you said we will use his tier-three to pay the unearned salaries. So what you told the auditors, was it just?
No, no, everybody has has tier-three with the pension fund. So in the in the case like this, we follow on them, but they told us that legally, before they can release the money to us, the staff should give consent before.
Okay.
Uh-huh. So you use that process to force him to write to us so that we can retrieve the money.
Sir, I'm giving you thirty days to retrieve this amount. If not, whoever is responsible will pay from his or her own pocket. It's just that simple.
Thank you, sir.
Abai Nsika, we won't let it go like that. Ah, the next infraction is on paragraph five-two-nine, and Honorable Ahinkwa will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, this infraction is on delay projects. The auditors noted that uh two contracts were given, two separate contracts were given for the construction of lecture theatres. And then an administration block to the tune of fifty-four million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight. But this project were behind the completion schedule in two years. They were supposed to be completed in two years. We are in twenty twenty-five. And looking at uh the projects, as I said, you have two different projects. One is a B U campus, T T U, B U campus construction of four-story lecture theatre at B U campus, T T U. And the contractor is Stephen Quagia Limited from Maxim. And then the contract was awarded in twenty, eh, yeah, twenty December, on the twentieth of December, twenty twenty. Uh, when you look at the project status and then payments, nothing has been paid to the contractor. Uh, what 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 is the reason? So take us through.
This is a Get Fund project. And the contract was awarded as stated. For the B U one, we have not received any payment. Yeah, the contractor is still working. For the lecture hall and administration block, the contract was thirty-three million plus. Early this year, we received four million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand as part of the payment for the lecture hall plus admin. So we are still following up at Get Fund to get the payment to complete the project.
The second project is the construction of a lecture theatre. And then renovation of an administration block.
Yes, please.
Some payments have been made.
Yes, please.
That is a.
Four point five million.
Yeah, four point five million. So which one is that amount catering for? Is it the renovation or the?
The let's, administration block, partly administration, some of the foundation of the lecture theatre.
So what is the status of the renovation work?
The renovation where they've done substantial and we are in it, left with a few, a small area to complete.
So all these are funded by Get Fund?
Get Fund, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. So what are you doing? Since you are claiming uh the payment is a, the delay in the payment is the fault of Get Fund. Have you taken any practical steps to get the money paid?
The vast answer is following up. The vast answer is following up and it's always a Get Fund to follow up for the payment. Is it? Yes, I think um the contractor is on the second floor of the fourth story. He has not received any payment, but we have sent all the certificate to Get Fund and I'm following on them for payment.
I think you just have to follow up.
Yes.
Because a contractor who has begun a project like we are claiming has done to the second floor and is still continuing without a payment from the 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 funding source, I think is 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 not good. It's not good. He's a good person. If I were the one, abandoning it will have been uh uh an overdue thing to talk about. So let's help him. Thank you.
All right, Tech Credit Technical University, you are discharged.
Thank you.
Now let's call Cape Coast, please. Please introduce yourself to the committee.
My name is Professor Kwekubachi, the vice chancellor.
Dr. Anthony Hecklus-Texon, the registrar.
Stephen Ayamilatianere, director of internal audit.
Khabno Ossu, director of finance.
Ah, we'll start with your financials on paragraph three-five-one.
Thank you, Chair. At Cape Coast Technical University, we are considering your financial performance and financial position. So for your financial performance, I can see for the years twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, there was a an improvement over your bottom line, which uh for twenty twenty-three, you had reported a deficit of three point five million. But then for twenty twenty-four, there was a surplus of two million fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty-seven Ghana cedis. That shows an improvement in performance. But then I just want to understand a few things. With your income, your I G F went up by over fifty-four percent. What accounted for that increase in twenty twenty-four?
Chairman, with your leave, I'll defer to the director of finance.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. Um, a chunk of the increase came from student fees. Student fees. Um, last year, we had approval from parliament to review our fees. So the review fees came a bit late and had to be charged for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five academic year. And that's what brought about that. Quite apart from that, we also had some grants from G S D F, um, which also came to support our revenue base. And then also uh increase in student enrollment also accounted for that. Um, we had about thousand students leaving the previous academic year and we had about two thousand three hundred coming as first years. So these were the factors which led to the increase in revenue. Thank you.
Then for your expenditure, I can see there was some increases in your goods and services. Uh, do you have any explanation for that as well?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, the increase in the revenue, which actually came from the student numbers, actually also came with some cost. For example, because for examination, printing and station and all that, which are related to student um teaching and learning, we had to increase, they had to be increased because the numbers had gone up. So fundamentally, we could see that the examination cost increased about one point five million Ghana cedis. And that's where it actually came from. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, on your financial position, I can see for twenty twenty-three, your ratios were not good at all. And even for twenty twenty-four, uh some bit of improvement, but yet you will still not be able to meet your short-term liabilities. Uh, what assurance do you give to the committee that you will be able to improve on your current ratio? Such that you'll be able to meet your short-term liabilities going forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are trying our best to actually ensure that we minimize or reduce our liabilities, current liabilities. And then also improve our current assets in terms of our mobilization. So we hoping that twenty twenty-five, we'll be able to come out of the woods. Um, so that we have a favorable current ratio. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I hope twenty twenty-five is looking good for you then, since you are giving us that assurance. Because we are in November, so.
Yes, yes, it's it's looking good. I hope we'll be able to cross to the one plus. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, the infraction is on paragraph three-six-zero, and Honorable Bawa will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chairman. And the third infraction is on, it's a payroll irregularity. Two members of staff of your school vacated post in February by all this participator from your institution, but you still pay them um for that month, from February to May. The two staff uh earned an earned earned salary of one hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dot two zero Ghana cedis. And the recommendation was that we should retrieve, recover this money from the affected persons. David Mensah and Patrick Fiati. Each sixty-six, uh, David Mensah was sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven Ghana cedis. And then uh Patrick Fiati was sixty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight. So the recommendation was that you should collect this money and then pay same to the Otageina's recovery account. Have you done that?
Thank you, Chair. We have contacted them. Okay, Prof. Chair, with your permission, I defer to the director of finance.
Thank you, Prof. Chair, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, what really happened was that when the auditors came, we had already written to their banks to request that those funds be returned to government chest. And so the final um recommendation that came from the auditors was for us to write to the bank to confirm that they took the action that we asked them. So there were two banks. One was A D B and then the other one was Eco Bank. Um, we did a follow-up with the banks. A D B has written back to indicate that um salaries were not received for the one, which is Dr. David Mensah, for the month concerned. However, we have done our possible best, written about three times. We've been to Eco Bank on two occasions, up to down. They have still not been able to actually um give us any information. They they have, initially, when we wrote, they asked that we give them information as to how much was involved. Because it's someone's personal account, they cannot derive the information. We have given them all that information, but still, they have refused to give us any information as to whether they return to chest as we asked them or otherwise. And that is why we are hoping that we'll get the information from them and then bring a finality to it. Thank you.
Director of Finance, you could see everybody on the table, you're shaking your heads. You've taken no action. The recommendation was that you should recover the money and pay same to the Otageina's recovery account. And now you are saying, you are telling us that the auditor said I should go and record that. Read paragraph uh three-six-two. Oh, no, three-six-three. We recommend to management to recover the total and earned salaries of one hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dot two zero Ghana cedis from the affected former employees and pay same into the Otageina's recovery account at the Bank of Ghana. And the account number has been stated. Now what you are telling us is the. And the account number has been stated. Now what you are telling us is different from the recommendation of the auditors. It means that no action has been taken on this recommendation.
Honorable Chairman, can I, the management letter that was given to us, as I indicated, when the auditors came, we gave them evidence of having written to the bank to ask that the money is be returned to chest. And so at that point, at the exit, the understanding was that we should, and if I'll be permitted, I'll read that portion of the recommendation the auditors made of the management letter, which was given to us.
Sir, the management letter, whatever they write in the management letter, they give you what, thirty days to comply to it? Not so?
Yes, we did.
When you don't, when you don't comply to what is in the management letter, what they write later on in the report is different. You are the finance director, right?
Yes, yes.
I'm sure you have a PFM regulations on your desk.
Yes, I do.
Okay, and I hope you read it, because look, the management letter you are going to write, that was between you and the auditors. You didn't comply within thirty days. Who validated these people?
Our staff, head of payroll and then the payroll staff.
Chair, with your permission, let me read the regulation ninety-two of the PFM regulations to the, to them. It says that the principal spending officer of a covered entity shall ensure the immediate stoppage of payment of salary to public servants and notify the controller and counter general on the death, conviction, conviction and sentence to imprisonment, dismissal or relief of post, leave without pay, vacation of post, resignation or retirement of our employee. In further states, that the head of the covered entity shall take the necessary action to retrieve any earned compensation occasioned by any of the occurrences listed above. So that was why the auditors say you should recover the money. So if you haven't recovered the money now, Chair, we are in your hands. It's like they didn't take the recommendation of the other general. So we are in your hands. Whatever you say.
This is Cape Coast Technical University. Those people who validated these employees are going to pay the hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and seventy-five. I'm giving you sixty days to pay this amount. Now, failure to pay, I recommend that you face the Attorney General for prosecution. It's just that simple. Cape Coast, you are done. You are discharged.
Thank you.
Let's call Hu Technical. Please introduce yourself to the committee.
Honorable Chair, my name is Christopher Mensah, an Associate Professor of Hospitality and Tourism Management and a Pro Vice Chancellor of Hu Technical University.
Honorable Chair, my name is Christopher Ameho, Registrar, Hu Technical University.
Honorable Chair, I'm Dr. Frank Clu, Acting Director of Internal Audit, Hu Technical University.
Honorable Chair, my name is Augustin Kwame Ousu, the Director of Finance.
Honorable Chair, my name is Nicholas Kofi Awaga. I'm the Director of Works and Physical Development.
All right, thank you. Honorable Abana Osayasa will take, go through the financials with you.
Thank you. First, want to go straight to your financial position, because I have seen some anomaly, if I should put it that way. Your current liabilities, you moved from four point five million to seventeen point four million. Can you share with us what caused this huge increase and why?
Honorable Chair, I will seek your leave to ask the Director of Finance to respond to this question.
Honorable Chair, thank you. It moved from four to the seventeen, because in twenty twenty-four, the Academic Board decided to defer the opening from October to January. So the school fee that we had collected by that time, we needed to defer the income to twenty twenty-five. So the figure there is ten point four nine million. Again, they were, we were holding on to a project funds, which we had not done the activities. So there was a need to defer that money to the following year where the activities will be carried out. Thank you.
Okay, then I think I'm comfortable with that explanation.
Thank you.
But I want to find out from you, what happened, such that your expenditure moved from ninety-eight point five million in twenty twenty-three to hundred and thirty-five million in twenty twenty-four?
It is attributable to the compensation of employees. The compensation of employees, we have the statutory government salaries in addition to the allowances that we pay on, from IGF. We have the allowances such as the earned service benefit, online teaching allowance support, board and committee allowances, which are all paid and is added to as part of the compensation of employees. So that's how come the figure increased. Again, in twenty twenty-four, we had an increase in the number of students. Twenty twenty-three, we had about five thousand students. It increased to seven thousand in twenty twenty-four. So because of that, expenses like teaching materials, examination materials, all those.
You had how many students in twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-three, we have about five thousand.
And then twenty twenty-four?
It increased to seven thousand one.
It increased to seven thousand?
Yes, please, madam.
Seven thousand, an additional two thousand. What's the percentage? It's just your student population increased by two thousand.
Yes, please.
But your two thousand students, when they were five thousand students, your goods and services was twelve point one million.
Yes, please.
And then they increased to seven thousand students.
Yes, please.
And it jumped to twenty-two point three million.
Yes, it also, it can also be attributed to the general inflation level that we had in twenty twenty-four too. So it's not only the.
Give me the breakdown of your goods and services.
With your permission, can I take my.
Yes, please.
Yes, can I, can I proceed?
Yes, please.
We have materials and office consumables, three point eight million, as again two point one in twenty twenty-three. Utilities, we have three million, as again one point seven in twenty twenty-three. Then rental and leases, five forty-seven thousand, as again five thirty-two in twenty twenty-three. Transport, travel and transport, we have four point one, three million compared to two point five in twenty twenty-three. Then repair and maintenance, two point four against one million in twenty twenty-three. Training and seminar conferences, one point seven to nine hundred and six thousand in twenty twenty-three. Then special services, which has another breakdown, five point one to two point seven million.
So you mentioned all that. So where did the inflation hit, such that you saw your goods and services with five thousand students move from twelve million to twenty-two point three million?
Madam, I've attributed to two things. One, because of the numbers, certain figures also changed. Certain expenses went up. Then the general inflation level too has influence on all the expenditure.
Yes, the general inflation level in twenty twenty-two, it was around fifty-four point seven. In twenty twenty-four, it came down to twenty-three percent. So when you tell me the general inflation level respectfully, where? I just want to know where. Because you see, you're telling us that your student population went up by two thousand. And that two thousand with all the other equally important things that you needed to purchase for the rise in the student numbers, saw your goods and services increasing by an additional ten million. But then when you mentioned your, the items, you check your transport, you check your training and you mentioned training and something, you see the huge difference. So I'm asking you, when inflation was fifty-four percent and it was coming down in twenty twenty-three, you did twelve point one million. And then in twenty twenty-four, when it was around twenty-three percent, your other went up. That's an inverse relationship.
Madam, the average for the year is what maybe you are talking about, but you started on a very high note at the beginning of the year.
Share it with me. In January twenty twenty-four, what was the rate?
Please, madam, I don't have the figures, sorry.
You don't have the figures, yet you are using that as your analogy for increasing your goods and services from twelve million to twenty-two million.
Madam, it's not only about the inflation, but I also said that the student numbers went up.
The students' numbers went up by an additional two thousand. And going up by two thousand shouldn't warrant an almost hundred percent increase in your goods and services.
Madam, you only checked the utilities too. It is also increased by, from one point seven to three million, with our utilities bill.
And your transport also went up. So, aha, so when you sit here and you tell us it's inflation, when you yourself now admits that your utilities went up from one point something to three million and then your transportation went up from one point something to another three million. So when you make that analogy, don't try and come and play politics here. You speak to the facts.
Yes.
And what I'm saying is that your student numbers went up by two thousand. Your goods and services has gone up by an additional ten million. And you said it's inflation. And I'm saying that when I compare twenty twenty-three inflation to twenty twenty-four inflation, the numbers came down substantially from twenty twenty-three. And in twenty twenty-three, where it was even up, you did twelve million with five thousand students. And it's gone up to seven thousand, I understand. But the rate at which your goods and services has increased, it far outweighs, one, the number of students and the rate of inflation you claim was the cause of this. Today, you think you can explain it away. Inflation is eight percent. Next year, you come, you say inflation again, the whole world be watching you. I also see specialized expenses here. Can you share with me what specialized expenses is from your end?
I have a shadow I have to refer to, madam. There's a shadow to it, I will share with you. Madam, with your permission, can I mention them?
Yes, yes, please.
We have sports, recreation and cultural materials, forty-three thousand. Then we have teaching and examination costs, one point nine six million, as against one million. Then trade promotion and exhibition, congregation expenses, then production unit expenses.
Your specialized expenses, as I see in this account, is eight hundred and thirty-four thousand. Auditors, can you confirm? Is that, that is what you have here as specialized accounts? But the breakdown you have given me is way above that.
Yes, Honorable Chair, it is exactly as is indicated in the report. I think maybe he's mentioning from a different note, because what we have here, the details are here. You have insurance and compensation, one forty-five thousand. You have professional fees, sixty-seven thousand, court expenses, seventy-four thousand. Awards and rewards, four thousand six hundred and thirty-two. Donations, forty thousand five hundred and sixty-seven. Contributions, eighty thousand eight hundred and twenty-two. Special operations, three hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven. And scholarship and berths, eighty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-five. So when you put all together, you get eight hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Thank you very much. So can you speak to that, what you gave to the auditors based on that? They use, they use it to prepare your financial performance. So if you can speak to that one and break it down, I have a few questions on that one.
Madam, sorry, I was reading from special services. I'm sorry. So it is what the auditors have said. I'm sorry.
Yes, I heard special operations and a couple of other line items. At your end, what special operations do you undertake? Just share with us.
Madam, we are using the on the chart of account. So that's where, recently, we didn't have a line for accreditation. So now that it has been created, we are now using it as. So those expenses that were not clearly stated on the GOG chart of account, that's where we are putting them.
Yes, so tell us, what are some of the line items that did not have, that you couldn't find in the chart of accounts that you put under special operations?
Like I said, we didn't have accreditation.
Yes.
Then, in fact, this is what really come to mind.
You can check from your, your, your.
I don't have the ledger here.
Oh, but respectfully, you are coming to speak to your performance, financial position, financial performance. And so if you tell me you don't have what fed into the numbers that we have here, that shouldn't be.
Honorable, please, the ledger that contains the various items, that is what I don't have. I will have the prepared account and not the ledger.
Yes, but it's like notes to the account, and you should have notes to the account.
The note is here.
Yes, and then you said special operations, and I'm asking you, give me the breakdown of your special operations. And you said there are item, online items that don't have, that cannot be found in the chart of accounts. So you balk it under special operations. I said, give me an example. You said accreditation. So accreditation alone took the hundred and forty-three thousand? Prof, please, can you, can you tell us something?
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. As he mentioned, accreditation constitute a greater proportion of the expenditure when it comes to the special operations. If you allow us, he will do a further consultation in a laptop and provide the fine details as to what constitute the special operations in terms of the breakdown. Thank you.
Okay, so you will finish us with. Okay, so you will finish us with that. He also mentioned, can you please go over those items? And he mentioned one item that I find, I would want further and better particulars on that. If you don't have it, we can ask the auditors to go over again.
Right, so Honorable Chair, we have insurance and compensation, which is one forty five thousand.
That was my concern, insurance and compensation. I thought compensation already had a line item in the expenditure. And so why do you put compensation again under specialized expenses? What kind of compensation is this?
Please, madam, the chart of accounts has that account led item. But what is actually there is for the insurance on our transports, insurance for the students when we admit they do insurance for them. All this thing put together constitute the insurance. So it's not compensation for employees as in salaries, no, thank you.
You explained why your current liabilities shot from four point five to seventeen point four. And clearly, that has affected your current ratio. Such as it's come down from where you could pay your short term liabilities by two point six times to one point four. And so you need to take steps to improve upon your current ratio. But I hope that moving forward, this looks like more of a one line, one off item. And that wouldn't affect your current liabilities to that tune again, to affect your current ratio.
Well taken, madam.
Rankin, I'm done.
Thank you very much. The next infraction, the next infraction is on paragraph four eight seven. And Honorable Ahinkwa will take care of that one.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, this infraction is on overdue national health insurance claims to a tune of one four eight thousand Ghana cedis. The auditors discovered that health insurance is owing the university to a tune of one hundred and forty eight thousand in respect of overdue claims for services rendered by the university clinic as at the first December twenty twenty four. The details are provided in table sixty six, and these are the details. April to June twenty twenty one, you submitted the claims to a tune of twenty seven thousand and three thousand three hundred and fifty eight was rejected. A non-payment was made, you didn't receive anything. You submitted this, they rejected three thousand out of it, and yet nothing was paid to the university. Then in June twenty twenty three, you submitted claims of one hundred and fifty three thousand one hundred and six. You received one zero four thousand out of that. Six thousand plus was also rejected. Then January to December twenty twenty four, you submitted six hundred and seventy one thousand nine hundred and fifty five. Nine hundred and five, please. And then five fifty thousand was paid with the rejected claims of thirty eight thousand. My concern here, I will come to the non-payments. My concern here, I've observed a trend. The rejected claims are doubling to a point that the last one, it is even six times the initial claim that was rejected. What is not being done properly, that is contributing to this increase in the rejection of claim? Because that comes to affect the operation of the facility. So what is the cause of this trend, this worrying trend?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The claims officer who was doing it needed some training. Because we also recognized that, I say the the claims officer, the person who was working on the claims to national health insurance. We realized that there were some gaps. So as we speak now, we have trained him, employed another person to assist him. Two, we also realized that we needed to have a committee which will also vet or quality control whatever we are sending to national health insurance. So I can promise you that when these things were done, the rejection rate for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five as we speak has gone down. We knew, we realized it was a gap which needed to be resolved. And we have taken steps to improve on the internal control systems and also improve on the processes that goes through before we send the bills to national health insurance. Because of that, in twenty twenty five, the rejection rate has gone down considerably.
The next time when you come here, we will see a different trend.
Yes, please.
Are you assuring the committee?
Yes, please.
And if otherwise happens, what should we do?
Because it is not, the good thing is happening, otherwise it will not happen.
I hope you are not telling us this to leave you off the hook.
Oh, no, please.
Are you sure?
It's something that management realized and we have worked on it.
And the claims have also jumped. Is it also the inefficiency of
No.
your officers, you said?
No, actually, our outpatient numbers have gone up. So we are getting more patients now, the statistics are there to show, that is why the claims have gone up. And that is the more reason why we needed to strengthen those, that processes to ensure that we get maximum from health insurance, please.
Have an outstanding of one forty eight thousand to claim from the Health Insurance Authority, isn't it?
Please, it has been cleared now and
It has been cleared?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I have a bank statement to show.
Auditors.
Honorable Chair, the amount has been paid by the N H I.
Okay, the next infraction is on paragraph four nine three, and Honorable Kinney will take care of that.
Thank you, Chair. Ho Technical University, you are welcome.
Thank you.
You are with Zolo. Therefore, Mr. Chair, this has to do with delayed projects. Four construction project had been delayed excessively beyond their expected completion dates. The auditor general noted that the Central Tender Review Committee of the Ministry of Finance in a letter dated twenty ninth November twenty twenty four reviewed and revised the contrast sums of the projects to reflect the then current conditions in the country. However, no contractor had moved to site to continue with the project as of then. The auditor general then recommended to management to intensify management, to intensify engagement with the contractors to move back to the various sites and resume work on these construction projects. Mr. Chairman, the projects are as follows. Construction of five story, twenty unit, three bedroom self-contained staff flats. Construction of two story rectory residence. Construction of five story central classroom block for school of arts and designs. Construction of proposed classroom complex at Ho Technical University. Management also promised that they were going to hold a meeting with the contractors to ensure that they move to site in two weeks. I want to know how far you have gone about that project.
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. All the contractors are back to site. However, with your leave, I will ask Director of Works to provide details. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. It is true, but it's also true that the contractors are back to site. With the collaboration of the consultants and H T U management, all the four contractors are currently at sites. Three out of the four are working assiduously to finish a project even ahead of the extended contraction period. We only have challenge with one, that is the construction of Faculty of Arts and Design block, Majorz Proku. He is also at site, but unfortunately, he's working at a dirty space or slow pace. However, they've all moved from the current percentage you see. For instance, the very first one being seventy two has moved up to eighty five percent. The second one also has moved from seventy to eighty five. And the fifty eight has just done about two percent of sixty percent currently. And the last one from fifty five to sixty five percent as of yesterday. Honorable Chair, to even add, just yesterday, we had a site meeting to re-stress the point for the need for the facility. And so we are very hopeful that they all complete the project within the extended construction period. Thank you.
What accounts to this delay?
All right, thank you, Prof. Chair. There were two major factors. The first had to do with a delay in payment or unreimbursed payment submitted to Get Fund in early days of the project. The second has to do with, as a result of the delay, there was a need for review of rates. Because the initial contrast sum could not withstand the inflation or the fluctuation rate. So hence, there was a need for the review. Fortunately, it was done late last year, and hence, the contractors agreed and mobilized back to site. And so they are currently at site.
With delay in payment, have you been able to layers with Get Fund to push for payments?
Honorable Chair, yes, and as we speak, all the areas on the pending certificate have been cleared. And that is how come, and also the rates had been reviewed by Central Tender Review Board or Committee. And so all the hurdles are cleared. We only hope that when the certificate is submitted, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, Get Fund will honor and the contractors will continue to work without any break, so that we'll work within the construction period.
When do you think these projects will be finished? Will be finished?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. All things being equal, center repairables, we should finish by June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. I say so because if they submit a certificate and it's not honored, we may, all right, thank you, Honorable Chair. So hopefully next year, thirtieth of June, twenty twenty six. But we are also hopeful that some may finish even before that, sir. Even before close of year, like Major D Fier, sir.
Mr. Chairman, over to you, sir. Hope went to Nigeria, she hasn't come back. The next infraction is on paragraph four nine eight, and Honorable Frankie Awo will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It has to do with double receipt of salary, double receipt of salary. And Ho Technical University, this one, it bothers on integrity, so I want you to listen very carefully. One Dr. George T. Banji was employed by Investor of Health and Allied Sciences in November twenty sixteen as assistant librarian. Then, with the chairman of your leave, I want to read a clause in his employment contract. It says, the appointment is full time. Any additional occupation or employment outside the university can be accepted only with the prior permission of the Vice Chancellor acting on behalf of the Council. So with this in mind, Dr. George Banji went ahead and took another appointment at Ho Technical University as Senior Assistant Librarian. So the reason he gave to Investor of Health and Allied Sciences was that he was attending to pressing family issues. So whilst he was collecting salary at Investor of Science, sorry, Investor of Health and Allied Sciences, he was again collecting salary at Ho Technical University. So the whole salary he collected amounted to ninety thousand eight hundred and seventy three. See, the auditors recommended that you should take steps to recover the said amount from Dr. Banji and pay same into the auditor general's recovery account at the Bank of Ghana. Before I ask you what the current status of the issue, I want you to walk us through what actually happened, so that Ghanaians will know what actually happened. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. I will ask registrar to respond to this question.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Dr. Banji applied for an appointment or for employment at Ho Technical University together with all others when the university granted clearance. He was interviewed and appointed. He accepted the appointment and assumed duty. During the interview, what we knew was that he was on leave of absence from the other institution, U H S, which for us is normal in educational institutions. So he worked with us up until, I think, November twenty twenty three, when we realized that his salary stopped coming. So we decided to find out from the Controller and Counter General's department through G Tech, because that was the procedure. And we had information from G Tech, which also checked with Controller and Counter General, that Controller and Counter General had detected that he was being paid by two institutions, and therefore, that was the reason for the blockage of the salary. In fact, we have a letter from G Tech to Daifet, because we wrote and he also wrote to explain this to us. And it also indicated that in the controller system, the staff was tagged or labeled as having left U H S on study leave with pay, probably erroneously, because with that, then his salaries could continue to be paid over there. So it was actually the onboarding of U H S onto the, you know, controller payroll system that revealed this, which we also got to know at that point. And so we invited the staff, explained the situation to him and gave him the option of staying in one institution, either in H T U or at UHAS. And he chose to go back to UHAS. And so as we speak, Mr. Chairman, he is not in the employment of Huo Technical University. He has since returned to UHAS and that's where he is now. This is what I can say about that.
Doc or Prof., I don't know whether. So when you interviewed him, did you do any due diligence in respect of his leave of absence and the conditions attached?
Honorable Chair, his appointment came at a time when we had a deadline to meet for the clearances. So what we did for all that batch was to let them go through whilst we do the checks. And so we did a check all right after all of this. But his name had gone into the payroll system already. And it was only when this issue came up, you know, from GTEC, that we got to know what exactly was happening.
Okay, now that you've you've attempted to explain that no due diligence was done, let me ask you whether or not you've been able to recover the full amount of ninety thousand eight hundred and seventy-three Ghana C D from Dr. Banji.
Okay. Director of Finance to give us the details on that.
Mr. Chairman, Controller has recovered five months from his salary at source. I've finished the auditors with the payroll, his pay slip for April twenty twenty-five for further reconciliation. So from the payroll, five months of the salaries have been withheld. Thank you.
Okay, so auditors, can you confirm, please?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that five months' salary has been deducted at source.
Huo Technical University, is it a case that have a plan, like a repayment plan in place to collect the remaining amount or what?
Honorable Chair, after the reconciliation with the audit service, the external auditors, you write back to him and demand immediate payment of the balance. Thank you.
We have no agreement with Controller yet in respect of monthly deduction from his salary at source.
Honorable Chair, because he's no longer on our payroll or not in our employment, you can only rely on UHAS or him himself to pay the balance. Thank you.
And I'll give you your advice. Thank you.
It looks like, auditors, it looks like Controller is dealing with him, right?
Yes, Honorable Chair. And the figure so far deducted is sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-six.
Okay, now, very encouraging. So it means Controller would take care of him. Okay. Okay, Huo Technical, I guess that is it for you. You are discharged.
Honorable Chair, thank you very much.
Let's call Kumasi. Please introduce yourself to the commentary.
Honorable Chair, good afternoon. My name is Professor Gibre Jummo, the Vice Chancellor. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, my name is Isaac Ousoua Sana, the Director of Finance.
My name is Ebenezer Kufibwache, the Registrar.
Honorable Chair, I am Divine Komla Satrie, the Director of Works and Fiscal Development.
Honorable Chair, my name is Asarabafu Frempong, Director of Internal Audits.
Honorable Abnose Asar will take you through your financials.
Thank you very much, Prof. and your team. You are welcome. Prof., we noticed that in twenty twenty-three, there was a huge deficit of sixteen point six million Ghana C Ds. Can you tell us what caused this huge deficit?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. With your permission, I would like to defer this to the Director of Finance to assist you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I think that the deficit was as a result of a treatment of a provision for separation allowance. When we adopted Ipsas, we had to make full provision for all staff as if in the coming year, they will be going on retirement. So we made full provision that accounted for about thirty million. Besides that, we didn't do that well in terms of revenue mobilization. And we also had some impairment of even school fees. So that caused the deficits.
And then in twenty twenty-four, what was the success story? How did it come about, the surplus of three point two million?
Yeah, we turned it around because our revenue mobilization improved. And if you can see, for both revenue from non-estim transactions and estim transactions, we improved tremendously. We did about thirty-nine point three percent increase for government subvention and grants. And then for academic fees and other charges, we did twenty-three point three percent. And for miscellaneous income, we did ninety-eight point four percent. And I think we also were able to contain some of our expenses and that accounted for the turn of.
Yeah, well, yes, but your compensation shot up by thirty million.
Yeah.
What was it?
Yeah, we received clearance to employ more and we also negotiated with our part-time lecturers to increase the hourly rates and that probably accounted for the increase in the compensation.
I think your financial position also improved, yes, from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. You now are able to cover your short-term liabilities by almost three times compared to once in twenty twenty-three. I think beyond that, I don't have any other question.
Thank you.
But to encourage you to improve upon your I G F because where you are, I mean, you can you can make a lot of non-tax revenue. You can come up with interesting programs that will encourage more people to come on board and you can make more money. So Kumasi is Kumasi. So we want you to work on your I G F and make sure you're making more revenue in that regard. And as much as possible, have a downward trend when it comes to your expenditure. I'm not saying don't increase it, but then when you are increasing it, you must increase it in measures that will help you to continue to make some surplus for the university and also try and maintain your current ratio or improve upon it. That's that's what I have for Kumasi.
Very well noted. Thank you. All right, your infraction start from paragraph three oh-two. And Honorable Hotojia will take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this has to do with an earned salary to the tune of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eleven Ghana C Ds. The auditors have realized in your books that one Hamidu Mahmoud was granted a scholarship by the Scholarship and Staff Development Committee of your university to pursue a four-year degree program in computer science and technology in Wuhan University in China. One of the conditions attached to this scholarship is that Mr. Hamidu should complete a dis形 form, a bond form, and submit same to the Kumasi Technical University before his departure. He never did that. He left. Management traced him to get this thing done. It was never done, but at the end of it all, whilst away, he was able to take a salary. He was supposed to take salaries and allowances to the tune of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eleven Ghana C Ds, despite the fact that he was away. That was from January twenty twenty-two to June twenty twenty-four. The auditors are recommending, they recommended that he be made to pay the money in full into the auditor general's recovery accounts at the Bank of Ghana with account number one oh one eight three three one four seven zero zero one five. What effort have you made to ensure that he paid that money?
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. We have contacted Mahmoud severely to get him paid the money. Since it's not coming up, we have reported the issue to Yoko and we are liaising with Yoko to get the money paid. But my registrar, Honorable Chair, with your leave can provide further details on that.
Just to let you know, our second deputy speaker is here with us. Yes, thank you.
Minister.
Okay, let let me welcome you, people from Kumasi, Kumasi Technical University.
Thank you.
Yes, I could see some guy in, we used to school together. So you are welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Chair.
I hope you are discharging yourself well. Are they discharging themselves well? Not bad, anyway. So.
Honorable Chair, thank you. When the university detected that Mahmoud Hamidu had left and was still receiving salaries, we quickly prompted the Directorate of Finance to block the salary. And then we reported the matter to the Economic and Organized Crime Office to get him to pay the stated amount. In fact, the Yoko invited several officers, and they are still inviting several officers of the university to their end for interrogation. And they've asked us to leave the matter with them until they finish their exercise and submit a report.
You see, when you handed it over to Yoko, did they give you any paperwork? Any evidence that they are handling this case?
Honorable Chair, yes, they write to us and invite us one after another.
Did you give that to the auditors?
Honorable Chair, yes.
Auditors, could you confirm if you cited anything that Yoko is working on?
Yes, Honorable Chair, correspondences between them and Yoko indicate that the the matter is with Yoko and Yoko is working on it, but nothing has been recovered so far.
But let me find out from management who sanctioned the collection of these salaries because it must be authenticated by someone. Who did it?
Honorable Chair, we have a validation team that works on salaries. In fact, Mahmoud Hamidu's case is quite complex, if I may, Honorable Chair, to to give a little background. This is an electrical engineering lecturer, highly skilled practically. And in late twenty nineteen, C T VET requested that we second him, for him to lead a government project to mentor second cycle, T VET institutions whilst with the work on a certain policy. Mahmoud was seconded to C T VET. In fact, he led a Ghana team for world skills competition on three occasions. And it was a very positive report and the university was proud of him. In fact, when his secondment ended, he returned to the university in January twenty twenty-two. Everybody saw him physically. But a three-month prayer to his return, he had applied for PhD sponsorship to pursue the program in China. And the Scholarships and Study Row Committee approved. So when he returned, the officers in charge of the bonding regime contacted him to complete the bond form before the letter of sponsorship is given him. Actually, the letter of sponsorship was never given him. He was around on campus and our internal audit does monthly head counts at the departments. And nothing showed that he he had left the country at a point until management got to know it. And then we took action and the matter went to Yoko. In fact, if we've tried to contact Mahmoud physically, but we are not getting him, Yoko is working on it. If you check his Facebook wall, you actually see him working in China in a university. Yet Yoko says we should wait for them to finish their exercise. Thank you.
Where I am having a problem is I think validation is supposed to be done with the physical person being seen. So how come that his mere presence on the campus could convince someone to validate his salary to take for this number of months?
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. As I said earlier, the internal audit director contacts every department every month to to do head counts and the heads of department confirm that this person is here or that. But there is a little challenge here. Some staff are on study leave, yet they are around campus working. They go to their supervisors periodically when the university is in recess. So some H O Ds may write study leave, yet the staff is around. So internal audits got this information from the department, Mahmoud study leave. So they construed that to mean all the other staff on study leave who are around and the departments write the same thing and until we detected that he was absent.
Mr. Registrar, Mahmoud's case is different from the one.
Yes, sir.
Mahmoud was supposed to meet a bond condition he never met. So if you should see that person hanging around, that should not satisfy you that the person is around, so you validate the person because you knew the person refused to do something. And you have also decided not to issue out the study leave letter also. Is that not it?
Yes, Honorable Chair, the study leave letter contains the conditions of the study leave, including certain payments besides salaries. So until one completes the bond form, the leave doesn't become effective. But we've had history of some staff who would be granted study leave all right, but they wouldn't go. They will still be working in Ghana, they will be working in the university. That is to say, they wouldn't take advantage of the opportunity. So you would definitely see Mahmoud as one of those if you see him around.
I wouldn't see Mahmoud as one of those. Maybe those people, they listen to your your conditions and maybe they abide by, they abide by the condition. But Mahmoud refused, he categorically refused to do it. So that person should become a special piece before you.
Honorable Chair, thank you. That is the case. That is how come the matter was referred to Yoko. It's a special case.
Prof., please.
Prof, please. This is, I think, the state of the seven time that we are talking about. People not filling the bond form. Is it a complex thing to complete? How is it like? And what are the requirements to help you fulfill?
I think the complexity has to do with getting guarantees, you know, to guarantee. And guarantees these days are not willing to guarantee for people. Knowing that if they are not careful, they may also put them into trouble. So that's the main reason why sometimes you find it very difficult getting people to guarantee for others.
So their catch is the guarantees, getting guarantees.
Is the problem here.
The guarantees are very, very smart. So the amount, what has happened to it, the refund?
Honorable Chair, at the moment, the issue is Yoko and Yoko has directed us to, they are saying that we should leave it to them for them to work on it and then they will get back to us.
The next infraction is on paragraph three oh eight. And Honorable Eda Magbano will take care of that.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Vice Chancellor and the team, in breach of Regulations ninety-two of the Public Financial Management Regulations twenty nineteen, LI two three seven eight, you paid twenty-five thousand plus to one Dr Augustina Mokho, who was on leave of absence. In your response to the auditors, you indicated that you wrote to your Provident Fund Board to settle that amount. Update the committee on that amount, whether you have retrieved it or not. And also, if you met out any punishment to the officer who validated a staff who was not at post?
Honorable Chair, the said amount has been recovered from Dr Mokho. He paid initial twenty-one, little over twenty-one thousand, and then the balance has been paid. Thank you.
Mister Chairman, the second leg of my question, I ask if you took any steps to punish the person who validated him when he was not at post?
I think that the person who validated him didn't make a mistake. This is because it was just for a month. He put it in the system and sometimes controller will not act on it. But we immediately wrote to the bank to even hold on to his salary. Unfortunately for us, the bank didn't do it and we have duly recovered the amount. Yeah.
All right, the next infraction is on paragraph three one three. And Honorable Ahinkwa will take care of that.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, this infraction is on payment of ineligible allowances to staff on steady leave, amounting to forty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine. Chairman, the auditors noted that three staff of the university were granted steady leave to pursue various programs at different universities abroad. However, these officers were wrongfully paid salary-related allowances totaling for forty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine, as though they were actively at post. Their details are captured here. We know that when people are granted steady leave abroad to study, as you are saying throughout, it is stated in the steady leave letter that certain allowances that are tied to the salary will not be paid. So we know very well that these three people are on steady leave. And then those allowances that are tied to the salary, which they were not supposed to take, were still being paid to them to this huge tune. And if you look at it, the whole of January twenty twenty-three to December twenty twenty-four, you paid these monies to them. One, Mister Idrusu Kasum, he is studying at the University of Oakland, New Zealand. You paid him sixteen thousand, six hundred and one. Yet he has not returned. Mister Yasun Kobina Akku, University of Electronic Science and Technology, China, January to September, you paid him seventeen thousand, one hundred and twenty-one. Then Misses Elizabeth Seawat in Kumsin. What was our?
The amount was twenty-seven thousand.
Where? Yes, car allowances. I've not even mentioned all of them. So if you look at the total, these are huge sums. Why? You see, these things keep on repeating. You validate them, things that you are supposed to do, you ignore them. And yet you come before the committee, trying to explain to us to understand. If you were medical doctors, this negligence could have led to the loss of somebody's life. And if the person died, can you revive the person? So what has happened? What has happened? And what led to this? Let us know.
Honorable Chair, the said staff, we have recovered, for some of them, we have recovered the money. Others, they have also made part payment. But I will defer to the Director of Finance to give further details with your leave.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Misses Elizabeth Seawakumson, who earned four thousand one hundred and twenty-two Ghana cedis are fully paid and see him as being paid to Dr Jinois accounts. Dr J C Kobinalku, twenty-seven five five six, he is contesting part of the amount because a portion of it was an error on the part of the auditors because he came back from China during the COVID and he couldn't go and he was still here working. So part of the amount they stated was actually earned. I've brought those here that I will share with the auditors. But he has refunded fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight Ghana cedis, which I'm also, I'm going to send to the Audit General. The good thing is that they've been paid their book of research and I'm holding on to it until this issue is fully resolved. I'm not going to pay. So I'm going to recover all the amount from their book of research. The same applies to Kasim Idrisu. He has returned. He wrote to contest. And I've told him I'm not giving the book of research until I fully resolve the issue with him and reported same to the external auditors. Thank you.
These allowances, are they part of the salary? Or do they pay from controller? Or you pay them from your own source?
They are paid from controller.
Okay.
The question that I would want to ask is this. You've told us a story here. But when the auditors came there, you said they are writing letters to the three affected staff to refund their ineligible allowances. What you told us now, were you aware of it when the auditors came?
I think it was the auditors who actually found the infraction. It was part of their observation.
Okay. So did you give that information that you told us that they have refunded? At that time, had they refunded any of these?
No.
Okay, all right. Let's move on to the next infractions on paragraph three one eight. And Honorable Payto will take care of that.
Thank you, Chair. The report here indicated that auditors cited you these negligence of the passes of land that you do not have titles to reach. And is that a prime area in Kumasi metropolis? They were saying is in five locations. For the avoidance of doubt, I don't want to mention the locations. Because if you don't take time, somebody will just go and pick it and then it become a battering at the court. But you know what I'm talking about it. And so now you do not have a valid title document to the land. In fact, when they did estimate, they had over twelve million Ghana cedis. So you were brought here to come and explain why to announce those areas that belongs to Kumasi Technical Investors, a total land of seventeen point seventy-eight acres. You've not been able to register them and have a valid title to the land. So you can walk us through.
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. For some of them, we have obtained the lease that, the lease is here, we can show to the auditors. And others, they are at various stages of obtaining the title or the lease. But I'll ask my Director of Force to give further and better particulars about that with your permission.
Yeah, Honorable Chair, as the Vice Chancellor has rightly said, since from the time the auditors came till now, we have received the titles to one of the areas. And the others were in several stages of documentation. Some of them, because of the ban on documentation of statements by government, they have stalled. We have even gone further paying, we have paid the stamp duties at the Land Commission, waiting for the leases to be prepared. So we are just waiting to continue the documentation. One, for instance, the swamay land that was cited, it was a land acquired by government to the garages. And they were shared among the.
Hold on and come in. I didn't mention any location. So I do not expect you to mention location.
So they are all on different stages of documentation. We are following up on them.
Okay. Auditors, can you confirm the one that they've gotten title to reach? Whether they've shown it to you or they've not?
Honorable Chair, like as they indicated, they had a document and they are here to show them to us. So we'd be pleased to have them to study those documents. Thank you.
And my last question will be, you know, having those land in prime area. These days, people use any sophisticated, what do you call, machines to pick lands from a far distance. Before you realize they registered them, what you do is to batter it at the court and fund them back and a whole lot of things. So I will encourage you, inasmuch as you take steps to register them, do everything as fast as you can. Because these land, especially the one close to your campus area, you must be able to ensure that you register them properly, then it becomes the bona fide property of the school. So please, Vice Chancellor, make every effort to see to that these documents are valued acquired. Thank you.
Chair.
Honorable Chair, welcome to the table.
Thank you very much. Just to let you know, there's an elementary school in my constituency. They didn't care about the land. We went on holidays, we came back. Somebody was building a house right in the center of the school park. Right in the center of the school park. Because the land is not registered. They are daily darling. And he too, he bought the land. And he has gone to register it. Montana, I'll be building on these lands. The next infractions on paragraph three two three. And Honorable Shelly Chair will take care of that one.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Kumasi Technical University, you gave scholarships to seventeen members of your school to pursue various academic programs. But when the auditors turned up, you couldn't provide certificates of completion. You were asked to make sure that all seventeen bring in their certificates. Your management response indicated that you've granted extensions to a number of them, but thirteen have been referred to the Schools Staff Development Committee. And you were awaiting a decision at your next meeting. I would like to know if that meeting has been held. And if it has, what was the decision by the committee?
Honorable Chair, yes, we had that meeting. We have had that meeting. Concerning the seventeen students, sorry, staff, all of them are at post currently working. And some of them have submitted their certificate as we speak. Others have also submitted their thesis that they will be graduating very soon. And others are also at various stages of completion. But I will defer this with the leave of the chair for the registrar to give more details on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. In fact, the Scholarships Committee met last Tuesday. As statuteually, that committee meets once every semester. So they met on these seventeen and considered each staff's issue on its own merit. As my Vice Chancellor said, a couple of them have finished and submitted certificates. A number of them are at various stages of completion. Some of them have done their vivers, are waiting their universities to graduate them. Some of them are waiting to go through their vivers. So the Scholarships Committee gave each individual an extension up to a certain point to either show proof of completion or submit certificates. That is where we are now. But they are all at post working at the university.
Okay, please, can we have a breakdown? Because some others, others are that. Can we have numbers? Maybe five have been given extension, maybe just put numbers to what you are talking about, please.
Honorable Chair, one has completed and submitted a certificate. Two others have completed and are waiting to graduate to bring their certificates. Two of them have submitted their thesis and are waiting viva votes with their universities. And there is a particular one who whose program depends on publications before graduation. He studied in Portugal and he has actually published two out of his objectives and has done the last one, awaiting the publishing house to publish it. And based on that, the university would give him the time to attend a viva vote and defend the project. So the others have had extensions up to, it's generally up to June twenty twenty-six to complete and/or submit certificate.
That means six out of eighteen are waiting. One has completed. The other five are waiting. One is awaiting publication. So I mean, six, you mentioned six. So the remaining are all, what, they've been granted extension?
Yes, please.
Okay.
By the Scholarships Committee.
Please, have you informed the auditors about this?
Honorable Chair, we submitted the document today based on the Scholarships Committee's decision on each individual and the auditors would have it.
Auditors, can you please confirm if you've been notified?
Honorable Chair, yes, they submitted it to us just today. We got it today. We are here to verify the status for each one of them.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We are in your hands.
Thank you very much. You need to follow up on these certificates. We all know people who have thought at universities for several years and they don't have certificates. And they will run around with you. So please, yeah. So please, it's very, very important. Okay, who let? Who gave them the time limit up to twenty twenty-six to complete, to submit?
It's the Scholarship and Staff Development Committee. Scholarship and Staff Development Committee.
But what is the policy on those who go on a steady leave? What policy do you have on when they should come with their certificates?
Honorable Chair, it depends on the duration of their program.
But in case when you are done and in case when you are done, you have three months to wind up and then come back.
Yes. Kumasi Technical University, you are discharged.
We are grateful, Honorable Chair.
Now we have Accra Technical University.
Kumasi, your IGF, work on it too, because you can make a lot looking at where you are.
Please introduce yourself to the committee.
Honorable Chairman, thank you. My name is Professor Amevi Akapovi. I'm currently the acting Vice Chancellor of Accra Technical University. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, my, my name is Eric Afuaqua, the Deputy Director of Finance.
Honorable Chair, my name is Linda Tomiti, Deputy Registrar, Acting for the Registry. Thank you.
All right, we'll go through your financials with Honorable Chris Kuneado.
Chairman, thank you very much. Welcome, sir. Let's first look at this expenditure line item. That will be the compensation of employees. Both the government's intervention and grants and your own expenditure in terms of employees are increasing. What is accounting for that, especially the one with the expenditure line item? From ninety-six million to a hundred and twenty-one million, what is accounting for that?
Thank you, Honorable. With your permission, I will defer this to the Deputy Director of Finance to help us.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. This is mainly because of increase in government compensation, the annual increment. And then also the recruitment of part-time or adjunct lectures to come and assist because we don't have plans to recruit more staff.
Okay. Anyway, social benefit, am I to believe that your social benefit is also reflective of what the other investor told us? That you are giving more scholarship to individuals to study in the university?
Yes, that's right. We are doing the same thing.
You're also doing the same thing?
Yes.
Okay. And your other incomes, what are your other incomes composed of? You are increasing that one also?
A minute. Our other income have to do interest income, exchange gain. And then we also have some, some businesses on campus that are also bringing revenue. Like the ATU cafeteria and then the Aquaba Lodge.
Prof, please, can you speak into the mic? They are trying to record it and they are struggling to. Yes, thank you.
I say our other incomes include interest income, exchange gain. And then we also have some businesses on campus, including the ATU cafeteria, the Aquaba Lodge, and then we also have staff rent income. And then also disposal income and production units. All these contribute to our other revenue. Thank you.
Prof, I, I seem to be a bit worried when I look at your statement of financial position. You are liquidating more of your current assets. Sixty-five to sixty-two by your current liabilities, Prof. Hugely increased to about ninety-six percent from twenty-four to forty-seven million. That is huge. Very huge. And when you look at your other incomes, the investment income that you, or interest that will probably be part of it. And looking at how you are liquidating and you're increasing your current liabilities, I think it's a worry. What is accounting for that?
Thank you very much. I will defer this question to the finance. Thank you.
Basically, it's, it's true that we are liquidating more of the income into, but this can be seen in the non-current assets. Because we are undertaking a lot of construction activities on campus. And the money is just being transferred, transferred from one asset to another asset. Thank you.
In fact, about, but that is just about fifty percent increment in that. And here we are talking about ninety-six percent. And no problem, probably your expenditure is also growing up in terms of your goods and services.
In terms of recurrent expenditure on renovations and maintenance, it's also going up.
So it's also going up. So it's also accounting into the liabilities. That's why you're not paying them off. Okay. But try, try and bring them down. Once it's into investment, non-current assets, that'll be good. That will yield enough returns in the future because it will form the base for you to have all, all of the things done. But when it gets into much more of the recurrent expenditure, that will be a difficulty. So just try as much as possible to contain the expenditure aspect of it. And your miscellaneous incomes are also reducing. If you look at your revenue from exchange transactions, you have academic fees and others and miscellaneous income that reduced significantly, about thirteen percent. Now your concentration is more on the school fees, but you are not considering the other ones. Because that is important. You had fourteen million the previous year.
I will let the Deputy Finance Officer answer.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. As you are saying, yes, it's true, you have observed well, but it's all because we are liquidating some of the investments and fixed deposits to undertake some of the maintenance and other, so our interest income actually reduced more. That affected the miscellaneous income.
Okay, good. I mean, once you are doing to maintenance and the rest, it shows a bit also in the consumption of fixed asset because it means your things are depleting. Okay, Chairman. But try and keep your current ratio a bit up. Although it's good, one point three is to one, at least is ideal. But when it was two point seven to one, that is better than reducing it to that nature. So that at least you can be able to pay off these liabilities when they fall due.
Thank you very much. It is well noted.
All right, let's go to the infraction and it's on paragraph three nine five. And Honorable Hotojie will take us through that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this has to do with an end salary to the twin of thirty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-six. The last audit disclosed that one Kudu, Kudi Fannwell, a former staff of your university who had gone on retirement on June twentieth, twenty twenty-four, was wrongly paid his salaries for three months from July twenty twenty-four to September twenty twenty-four. When the audit team pointed this thing out, you assured them that you were going to use proceeds from his provident fund and that you had already contacted the providence team. This amount of money by recommendation of the auditors is supposed to be retrieved and paid into the Audit General's recovery account at the Bank of Ghana. Have you done that?
Honorable, thank you. We confirm that we have been able to recover the amount and we have paid duly in the auditor's recovery account. It's done. Thank you.
Auditors, can you confirm that?
Honorable Chair, the full amount has been recovered and paid same into the Aegis Recovery Account on fifteenth September twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Accra. This is Accra Technical University, you are discharged.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Is Gimpa around? All right.
This brings us to the end of today's proceedings. And we want to thank all the investors and the normal investors and the technical investors that are turning up on us today. And we want to announce that tomorrow, Friday, will be our last sitting day for this session. And we will be meeting the Ministry of Education in respect of the consideration on the provision and maintenance of toilet facilities in public schools. We'll also be meeting the Ministry of Local Governments, Chief Tansy and Religious Affairs in respect of this same report. We'll also be considering a part of the public boards, corporations and other statutory institutions for the period ended thirty-first December twenty twenty-four on Ghana News Agency, Graphic Communications Group, GPAC. And all of these boards, public institutions and the Ministry of Government Communications. We'll also be meeting the Ministry of Finance, the Bank of Ghana on the Petroleum Revenue Fund. The petroleum, yes, Revenue Fund. We'll also be meeting the Public Interest and Accountability Committee and the Petroleum Revenue Fund Secretariat. And this has to do with the audits on that. We also have a consideration on the Audit General's report on Get Fund, on scholarships. And so we have Get Fund meeting with us tomorrow. And finally, the Ministry of Finance will come with the Social Security and National Insurance Trust. So tomorrow, all things being equal, these are the people we are hoping to meet. Thank you so much to our technical people out there, to our auditors, members, the media and everybody. We are grateful to you for your service. Thank you.